All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I like to start with the district mission statement, inspiring learning and excellence for all. Inspires excellence in learning to prepare all students for success is our vision that is now right up there. Um, we'll call the meeting to order with roll call.
Stacy.
Here.
Dwayne.
Here.
Kristen.
Here.
Jill.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion. Second.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Jill. And Stacey.
Personnel report.
Okay, yeah, we have a few things. A couple resignations. First, Dick Smith wishes to resign from his bus monitor position. Contingent upon being approved for a bus driving position. Taylor Wusley wishes to resign from her TAP assistant position effective August fifteenth. She worked for the district for one year. Recommendations for hire. Randy Beeson would like to recommend Todd Tidgren for the seventh grade boys' basketball coaching position. Todd has twenty-one years of paid basketball coaching experience. Including five as a head coach at Carroll High School. If approved, he would be paid three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. Jennifer Detlinger is recommending Dick Smith be approved for a bus driving position. If approved, Dick's rate of pay would be twenty-two thirty an hour, and he would drive approximately six and a quarter hours a day. He would receive a two thousand dollar signing bonus and a five hundred, uh, plus five hundred dollars after the completion of all trainings. Melanie Gerard is recommending Bill Custer for the, for, for the kitchen worker position at Carroll Middle School. If approved, the rate of pay would be sixteen dollars an hour. And he would work three hours a day. Uh, Bill was a custodian for us in this building until he, uh, retired. Amy Collison would like to recommend Shaleen Feld for the combined nursing assistant and tier one TA position at Adams Elementary. If approved, she would work twenty-five hours per week as assistant school nurse and receive, and receive nineteen dollars and eighty cents an hour. And would work twelve and a half hours per week as a tier one TA and receive sixteen forty an hour. Amy Collison is recommending Tanya Anken for an instructional strategist, strategist position. Amy Collison is recommending Allison Hempstead for the administrative assistant position at Adams Elementary. If approved, she would receive sixteen forty-five per hour. Uh, work eight hours a day. Um, per day, August first through the May thirty-first, seven hours a day in June. Um, Randy Beeson's recommending Amy Madison for prom, student senate, and drama. She has one year to paid experience for drama. If approved, she would be paid nine hundred and eight dollars for prom. One thousand eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for student senate and two, two thousand five hundred and ninety-five for head drama. Uh, contract modifications. Melanie Gerard is recommending Deb Moore be transferred from CMS to CHS effective immediately. As she would be replacing another staff member who is transferring to another building. Uh, she has resigned her position as a TA and able to fulfill the additional hours. If approved, her hours will increase from six to six and three-quarter hours a day. Melanie Gerard is recommending Kim Hanlos be transferred from CHS to CMS. Effective immediately, as she'll be replacing another staff person who is transferring to another building. If approved, her hours will go from seven to six hours a day.
Casey, on number seven there, put the senate, the prom. Is, is that the same page as last year then too? You know, or did we change the pay schedules almost?
So it should be whatever it would be for another years of, or whatever years of experience where which for students in it.
Uh, we've, we revise. Prom did not change.
Okay.
Student senate. And drama did not change. Student senate did at the, one of the previous meetings, at one of the positions that we increased.
One, uh, drama a year now.
We're just doing one this year. Yeah, one play in the fall. I think it's play, it can be a play.
I think that's what I heard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome.
Is that including Jake being the assistant or something? Is that?
Yeah, Jake, uh, he's not on here, but we were just talking about that before, but yeah, that's the plan. So he might be on the, the next one.
He has a, he has a contract for assistant musical. It would just be assistant drama instead of assistant musical if it's a play. But he's already got a contract for the year, yeah.
That will rule the each year, right? They'll play the, the musical.
I mean.
So we, the same thing. That's what we had done. And then last year we did, or last couple of years we did two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the handbook.
Kristen.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yep.
Stacy.
Yeah.
Student and staff handbook reference.
Yes, we have preschool handbook. Um, we're trying, you want to talk anything about the preschool handbook or anything to mention?
Nothing really first sharing with them. Um, as you can see, they're added, really are eating to one of the things that we've been working on, uh, for, uh, curriculum. Had to update the arrival departure times to reflect their changes in school day. And then with both the preschool ones as well as the Fairview and Adams handbook, uh, Amy and I sat down to look over, um, policy, set about two, four, three, five. Three, five, and then updated based on that. And then the other changes for the preschool handbook, we removed IDs from the sessions and added early reading, early math. We're switching to that so we can. Um, which we talked about in the June board meeting, then updated by rules to mirror the theories to have changes that you approved earlier.
The middle school handbook is not done, is that right?
Oh, it's, it's done.
I don't know, it's, we have a lot of problems with it.
What's up?
Um, under, can I just read it? The people. I saw Tyler Harmony in there.
Hunter.
Hunter Harmony.
Is this the staff handbook or the student?
Um, let me see what I'm messing with here. Let's see, middle school student handbook, is that right after the?
Yeah.
Yeah, as I was reading through here. And I think we changed some of these forms, if I'm not mistaken, to for grievance procedures. Oh yeah, right there, abusive students by school employees. Christie Shanks is first and Hunter Harmony is second.
Oh, level one.
Level two. Jeff DeVorek is listed under affirmative action. Wow.
So that just needs to be.
Yeah, and I, I could very much be mistaken, but I feel like we've updated these grievance forms since twenty twenty. Just because I feel like I just put them in my binder.
Their probably actual policies now.
Yeah, but didn't these, the, the forms get updated?
There's some changes in one oh two, yeah. And so with all the handbooks, with the renumbering, we're gonna be having to go back and update the numbering of, of all, anything that's related to a board policy anyway.
I was just scanning through here and just caught a few of those things, just to make sure if it was done, done, or if it's still a work in progress.
Well, Dean, what were the, the, any significant changes to the kind of the?
Um, so obviously all the, all the times had to be adjusted. Because of the change in time for the, for the middle school, uh, tenancy, the attendance policy we updated and changed, so it was in line with the other buildings and the districts, so the wording's all the same across the board, especially the high school. That's really, those are the major changes from middle school policy, obviously are the matrix, the behavior matrix. The wording is, the wording is in there. The plan, they're still, they're working on that again tomorrow. And then that's, that's really all we changed and updated with the uh, student handbook.
Can we think about having parents sign off on the actual behavior part of it so they know, yes, that we read it?
The matrix.
Maybe, yeah, just to sign up, be an open house so they can say, yep.
So we can, you could approve the revisions and, and then put in there along with the updating of staff, make sure all the staff names are current and board policy. Updates are made. In terms of the staff handbook, Dean, do you have, uh, want to point out on that?
Did, uh, some change on the, the tardy intervention to make it, because it was, the times were different all across the board and how it was handled, so we made, we streamlined that from, from what it looks like. Handles that through the conversations that we've had with staff and what that looks like. Um, obviously changed the, the NWEA to star, so that was updated. That was, we give it time, just, just the time, times of the day. Uh, we did one thing that we came across, one of the big ones was the terms of confidentiality, just, uh, conversations that we really, I mean, it was just kind of in here and it just seemed like it was like, I mean, there's, obviously there's laws that we need to follow in terms of confidentiality and those weren't really spelled out that way, so we wanted to make sure that it was in here for the staff also, and hey, this is a way that we're gonna handle private confidential conversations and make sure that those aren't happening out in the hallway where you have other people hearing it, and we also wanted to make sure that teachers and staff understood that when they're talking about children. If we were talking about your child, it was just about your child, this child, I wonder if it'll show that was.
And there's also under the, um, Christie Shanks and Hunter is listed also under the abusive students by employee messengers in those, in the
In the staff.
Staff handbook, yep.
Yeah, we'll get that.
And also, do we still have wind time at the middle school?
Yes.
Okay, just double checking. Yes, I know there's discussion about that as well.
Yeah, we, yeah, it will be for this year.
Okay, perfect. I read that. Okay, I will propose to approve the handbook changes based on having the names changed where needed.
Personal and then cross check policy language.
Yes.
No.
Certainly.
Jill.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yeah.
Kristen.
Yes.
The next item is approval bids for the kitchen oven at the middle school. Melanie, um, Gerard requested three bids for placement oven at the middle school. Um, the existing convection oven is outdated, and so updating new irrational oven will match the oven, oven in place there. And have to help with consistent cooking and baking. She only received one bid back from the three that were sent out, and it was from Wilson Restaurant Supply for twenty-seven thousand two sixty-seven and sixty cents. Uh, and that's pretty in line with the ones we've received in the last year or so, um, in other areas, so it's a gas combi oven. So she's looking for approval to get that purchase. That comes from the food and nutrition budget, because it can be moved from building to building, so it can be paid for out of the food service fund and not the general.
Same as that warranty or makes sense?
Um.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars on the oven, just, for a couple of years.
Two parts, you, two years parts and labor, five years steam generator warranty. And then usually after that two years parts and labor, we put it on our equipment breakdown. And same, yeah. I didn't need glasses.
I agree, that is a really tight.
The motion law.
Thirty-second.
Return the program. Oh, Jim.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yeah.
Kristen.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Thank you guys. Door access hardware for the transportation.
Nope. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so we got a quote, um, across that one, from Walsh, front back, um, is for the new transportation facility, this would be for the door access. Um, the hardware to be able to scan in and and do all that. They were here, Walsh was here with, um, Jason from DLR, and they did a walkthrough of the building to identify, you know, where the card readers would be and those kind of things. So the quote, the first page is, on page one is, uh, for the hardware, forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-five, and then, um, on the back is, I know, I think it's reversed, we got some labor, they, they had it broken down for the labors included in there, I guess, all of their parts, and then they got labor on the back page. But anyway, so altogether, you're looking at, um, you know, around ten thousand dollars for these two things, or for these. But again, this is, we have to use Walsh really, because that's where we don't have, that's where all of our buildings, uh, that's what the access system is. Um, so uh, yeah, that's, and they're, they're not quite, of course, ready to do this, but we're, we went ahead and put it on tonight's agenda that way, and then get it ordered and and hopefully don't run into any little issues of getting, uh, materials here and equipment here to be able to install it when it's ready.
I'll move to approve the, uh, parts and labor bids from Walsh Mall Door, the security.
Awesome. Stacy.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jim.
Good.
Field trip.
Now, pretty field trip. Uh, consider approval, we have a, the, uh, Tammy Miners is asking to go to the Orpheum Theater in Omaha, March twenty-sixth to see the musical Six. And they need to put, start the pain of that, I think, and so that's why we wanted to get that, um, bring it to you. It's an out of state trip on March twenty-sixth. I'm not sure the date, if that's a weekend in the past when they went, it was a weekend, but, um.
Is that a trip down back the same day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not overnight. Usually, um, twenty-sixth is a Thursday.
It's always Thursday in the week.
And dinner and the show, it's generally what they've done.
Motion to approve that field trip. Second.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
And Stacy.
Yeah.
Transportation.
There. I think the thing that's linked there is that, or there wasn't anything to link there, that was no quote, but.
I looked it up, yeah.
Okay.
It was the, the door access was linked on that transportation update, so there's really not anything linked to it.
But we wanted to kind of talk, um, um, since our last board meeting, we have done a, a couple, or at least a pretty recent communication, um, last week we sent out, um, the shuttle schedule. Jen got some phone calls from there. We did get a couple of questions that were submitted in our, uh, through our website form that I responded to, um, today. So we're getting some questions and some of them are, you know, things that we're able to answer and, and, um, there were some misunderstandings we were able to clear up, and then there's some things that we just, you know, we answer them, maybe not the answer that they wanted to get, but we answered those. Um, I think Jen got, I feel the, uh, phone calls on Thursday and Friday. Yeah.
Today too.
And today, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And the radio station did a really great interview and has some really great information out for us.
Yeah.
That's, I've, I've, I've heard of people that have, had heard that as well, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so um, in the buildings, I know I got some questions about what about when the weather's bad? I think, you know, and the principals can talk about this, but the, as far as the shuttle, or waiting here for a shuttle at this building or one of the other buildings, there's a plan for this, those students to be able to be in the building when, if the weather is, if it's raining or if it's cold, or, you know, the weather's not suitable to be outside. Um, and they're working on their supervision plans, uh, to make sure that kids are supervised before and after school with, with those changes. Uh, we do have crossing guards here and at Fairview, um, we have had that, that's not new, but we do have those in, have those in place. Um, so we make sure that we help people understand that when, when they ask those questions. Um, I don't know, is there a theme of the questions you've been getting to the, the questions you've been getting, would you say? Is there one or two common things or?
Um, a, a lot of my questions are out of district families who are upset that we're not going to be busing out of district students this year. They, um, so that's probably the majority of what I'm getting. The rest of them, um, are pretty basic questions about the shuttles, um, they're, we, we publish the times, but they're just double checking, um, you know, so just confirming that they understand what the shuttles, basically, if I have my child, if my child wants to get on a shuttle at Fairview, I have to have them there at one of those times, or prior to one of those times, they can get on a shuttle, and they can go to any other building, and we are just simply confirming that information. We're also letting them know that, um, it doesn't matter which shuttle they get on, because both the red and the orange shuttle are gonna go to all six buildings. So if for some reason you happen to miss the orange one, but the red one is there, by all means, hop on that one, it will be just fine. Um, because they're, they're basically just making circles. One's going one direction, one's going the other. Um, now, bonus with having the minibus delivered and in place, and, um, with having Dick Smith approved to drive a route, I am gonna go ahead and put a route in that minibus and then free up another driver to add another shuttle. So I'll actually have three shuttle buses running around, um, doing those shuttles between, uh, between buildings in the morning and afternoon, so hopefully that'll help alleviate some, you know, some of the numbers that I was concerned about, not having any idea what we're, you know, what we're looking at for numbers. I was, you know, not quite sure how, how it was going to work, but hopefully three buses will get us a, a big chunk of those kids who, who need those, those rides, so.
Um, I think we, I have, it, you know, I think that it's a good opportunity to remind again, the, the driver of this is the fact that we don't have, we have five fewer drivers, like, one of the emails I got was, you know, it's not our fault as parents that there's some budget issue that you're responding to, and this isn't a budget issue. This is the fact that we have five fewer drivers. We have plenty of buses. Um, there was nothing in the works in terms of, uh, a budget issue that was causing us to reduce the, the amount of transportation. This is simply that we don't have five drivers. So we, we approved one tonight, so we would still need four. Jen and I have taught, I mean, our plan would be as if somehow in November we had four more drivers after tonight and, and five, that we would transition back to, to what we're, what we're doing, what we were doing before. Um, so it is not anything other than, there's no, um, there's nothing else at play here other than it's difficult to find bus drivers. Uh, so, um, but yeah, I, I think the plan is, a, and as she said, they're, they're running circles, and the plan is that they each would run two times, is that right?
Uh, two to three.
Two to three.
Yeah, depending on the location. I think St. Lawrence and Adams, because they're more centrally located, they may get hit three times where the middle school and, um, so you know, some of the outbound middle school, high school may only get hit twice.
Yeah.
So how does that work since the high school, middle school are gathered there? So are they together?
They're really not. It's just that they're so close together that it's hard to time the two.
So it is stopping at each one.
Yes, it is, but they, it's, it's within a, a minute or two. So, I mean, really, by the time the shuttle stops, picks up and gets to the other school, it wasn't, I put the same time because it's gonna be very close.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, bus drivers, on average, how many hours do they work?
Um, it depends on, on, uh, the, the, the basic AM and PM driver, they're working anywhere from two, three, maybe four, depending on how long their route is. Um, if I've got somebody who's doing, um, a, a noon route as well, times did change a little bit this year for preschool, so those are gonna expand, and, and they're, they're gonna be close to five, six hours.
So with, with individuals looking at the minibus driver?
Yeah.
Is there a concern about that, that they don't have health insurance, that they don't have other benefits? Is that one of the reasons why people maybe aren't looking at the minibus driver?
Now, it, I, I, I have recently had, um, a few people that have definitely asked that. Um, I've got some drivers who are putting in extra hours so that they do qualify for those benefits. Um, and we've, we've been able to work that out. Now, um, the new one we approved tonight would, he's, he's retiring from a, a full-time job due to an injury, so definitely wants those benefits because they're, you know, he's, he's, uh, gonna be losing his from his full-time job. Um, I wouldn't say all of them have asked for that. Um, some of the existing drivers that are retired and do have their Medicare benefits, they don't necessarily need those, but, you know, that could be a huge trend for the new, you know, that may be something that the board wants to consider for the new, you know, new up and coming drivers, or maybe a benefit that we want to offer. I, it's always something that we could.
Or is it something that we can look at where after they're doing the bus route, is there something else in the school district that can do?
We do have quite a few, or I wouldn't say quite a few, we, I mean, yeah, we, if, if they're indicating that they have a desire to, to be better eligible, we have a couple that drive bus in the morning and afternoon, and they are TA during the day to get to full-time hours.
Work in the kitchen, we've had that.
Or.
Couple of grounds crew.
Maintenance, definitely, yeah, cut some grounds, guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's just getting that out to the public, letting them know that, hey, if, if, if it's hours and benefits, there's still a possibility for you to obtain that and also be a driver.
You bet. And Case and I talked about, um, the possibility of having those, some of those grounds guys, you know, maybe get their license so that if we need them, or, you know, then maybe they could take a, an, an AM and a PM route in addition to their, so I mean, that's a possibility. I did, I did, uh, I do have a couple of coaches that are showing some interest. Um, one's a middle school teacher, um, and he, he did say that, you know, he would, he would talk to his principal if they could drive an AM and a PM route if he could. Sorry, sorry, Eve.
News to me.
I just talked about earlier today, so.
I think that's the thing that's challenging about this is, um, and I, I know we've probably talked about this in the public, and for sure, one-on-one, I know we have, but you know, is, in some cases, it's, uh, it might be pay, in some cases, it's benefits, in some cases, it just doesn't work in their schedule. To do, to say it's, to, you know, do this, and all of a sudden we'll get applicants, really, Jen was at the, the, the transportation conference, and she had one school saying, if that, if I had, if they paid benefits, was it the benefits? I think I could get more drivers, and the next district said, we're paying them, and are still, we're still trying to find drivers.
Yes. Yeah, and so I, I, I just, I don't know, it's one of those things that I don't know what that, what that answer is going to be. And we, we, we haven't offered benefits. I mean, if somebody specifically says, you know, what benefits are included.
Or if they're thirty hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's given that option.
Automatically eligible.
But if that's holding people back from, you know, coming to apply too, you know, at this, at this point, we don't have any applications, so, you know.
So we've been saying, I mean, we've been trying to accommodate where we can, so if she's talking to somebody and they're like, I really need this to be full-time, or I need the benefits, or whatever, then that's when we're talking to Melanie, we're talking to Jeff, we're talking about, or there, is there principals that we need, is there a TA? You know, that, that we can partner that with, uh, to make it full-time. Um, so.
Well, and Ryan and I have come up, come across a bit of a, yeah, he's got two, in, in the Fairview building, he's got two drivers that are TAs. And then also three, three TAs that ride buses, bus monitors. And so that's gonna be a little bit different for him and for me this year because their timeframe is. And so that's gonna be a little bit different for him and for me this year because their timeframe is, they they're not getting out until later, so he needs them in their building. Now, drivers, I'll have to have those too, but um but the bus monitors will adjust as best we can to, you know, make sure that they're. Accommodating in his building as well, so and we'll be as flexible and work as best we can.
And Abby, I think you'll get the facts out from this conversation where a lot of people now understand it maybe a little bit better. So thank you for helping us out on that.
Are you still gonna have a presentation at open house night?
We we talked about that, yeah, we were talking about uh either whether it's moving around open house or having some a separate night. But we're probably gonna try to tie it to like open house or something that we're already doing, but. The other thing.
Gonna be, I think this might be more principal wise, but um, cause I'm thinking like, okay. So the drop offs for the shuttles, like the high school from seven fifteen to almost um four o'clock. And Adams here, seven twenty-three to four or five, and then Fairview, seven twenty to four ten, we have people that are being family. We almost have to, right? A plan set.
Yeah, the mornings pretty well set, um, afternoon, I started talking to between my TAs and teachers, it'll just. Be some flexibility.
Last school year, the last drop here in Adams, the bus stop was about four ten, we don't, we don't supervise bus stops. So we don't not didn't have staff watching kids get on the bus to walk home at four ten. So I don't know that we have.
The only provision, like, the only thing that Ryan and I talked about is, uh, that was also middle schoolers, these will be younger kiddos with.
Younger kids.
Potentially a crosswalk.
That's how I know is, you know, I don't know if there's any like crosswalk over any, like the high school, middle school, just in case there is. Smaller kids that are getting off, I don't know, maybe these two, you know. I mean, my. Thing, I don't know.
If we're having Fairview or Adams kids dropping off to high school and middle school to walk across. Really hoping the parents are gonna be there.
Or they get off at Fairview and walk north. On trail versus.
Yeah, some of this might be, we'll have to see because like those.
Don't know who's doing the shuttle, who's doing the drop.
Right, we don't know.
Even more people doing drop-offs of shuttle.
Right. There could be, or and like those times too, we talked about that, it may be that there's still a drop at four ten, but it may be that there's. It's been a many ride.
Yeah, and just maybe that we don't clear it up, you know, front needed to haul gets.
We have daycares, just so you know, there, we are still stopping at daycares. That have been on our list, we they're not, we have not, it's not a deal where the it's a state certified. It it's the daycares we've been stopped at, and so Jen's been in communication with them and got, she's working on getting lists from them, I believe.
Yes.
Of students that she our drivers can expect. Um, so we've had some questions about daycares.
Yes, just wanna clarify, so there's a drop-off at four ten. Are you saying we're not gonna have supervision there or we will have supervision there? And is that something that maybe the administration can help all the supervision? Cause I'm thinking, if we have kids on our property or a drop-off, we need to have supervision there.
I think even like at the high school, like after like a sporting event, like. At the bus comes, you know, they wait until all the kids are gone or picked up by their parents, so almost need the same situation.
I I think.
Yeah.
Right. No, I think that we're, we need to plan to be able to supervise students, yeah, these these students will be dropped off and then they're gonna.
Are they just gonna be like, just like here, are they just all at the? You know, playing in the playground, are they gonna be standing, no one waiting for the next bus to come or?
Like for like.
Like smiling in the morning, how that's gonna work. Just to kinda give me an idea.
Which is, mine's been used before, and I know there'll probably be more students, we might just use like where the gym entrance is, have them stand there. So that they're covered and go out, mornings I'm really not worried about because we've naturally been that shuttle here. And then after school, while my kid, like Adams' kids are waiting for the shuttle, they'll be in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Under like and they'll have adult supervision, they're not going to be on the playground.
Okay.
And once they get dropped off, it's like any other bus stop, you're going home. So.
So they don't even enter, they don't even need to come on property at all, basically it's on the street.
So I walk outside.
So, yeah.
In Adams and Fairview have been bus stops.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
So that end of the day drop-off has already been happening.
Right.
It's not new.
Right.
The new is if any, we have any younger kids getting dropped off, middle school and high school are new bus stops at the end of the day, but. Our other buildings have been a bus stop for the last several years, that's nothing new.
And this all has to be fluid, I mean, you could start the first day of school and figure out that we need to make this adjustment and that adjustment and this adjustment and then.
And generally, we've started the year with more supervision and we've tailored it to what.
And sometimes that's why we would see contract modifications in September to add for supervision in the morning and the afternoon because we know we need more time.
I just wanna thank you guys for doing all this work for this, cause this has been amazing, I'm I'm total faith in all of you.
Jen, would you be able to come back maybe after about two, three weeks?
Sure.
Just to give some, they help, helps.
Absolutely.
There maybe little tweaks that you had made or.
Yeah, for sure.
Just just to hear, you know, do an update on it.
Absolutely, that's all supervision in my head, so I mean, I'm just hoping it all works out the way I see it. So yes, there's definitely going to be.
And just modifications, but just out of curiosity, any bus driven questions are addressed to you, right? So if I'm asked to the street, hey, what about this, I say, talk to Jen, that's what I've been.
Yeah, that's right.
And also, there's always modifications.
There are always.
Every year, like, there's always the four forty-five bus coming on day two in my neighborhood, because. It takes longer on those first days, but when this all happens on the first day, it will not be smooth.
No, no.
So, everybody is going to have to have lots of patience for that.
I would just like to see. It's not a heck of a summer.
There will be, and.
It's gonna happen.
We're going a full week. And part of that update that we sent on Friday, Thursday, actually, what included kind of like a. Heads up preview of the parent app that is gonna be long, so. As long as kids are using their tags and standing in, parents will know where their kids are when.
About last year, right?
Depend on on the building, but yeah.
Yeah, do you think need something, cause I'm just thinking if it was like here, how?
The elementary, they have retractable ones, at least some of them did, or they were.
Parents providing.
Or they had. I think our daygers.
Provide something like that, would that be?
So we, my building, both buildings at the elementary started with those right there, which, and we put them down low enough that actually they did. The kids really didn't have a problem.
Okay.
But the problem is, I mean, it's still plastic and it's brittle, so we had some parents that would upgrade it to like. That and then they. Eventually, we started to see more of a steel ring.
Is that some of the foundation?
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, it's something we could, I don't know how much they are, we can look at it, but yeah, I'm sure there'd be. People willing to help or we would just be able to pay for it.
Remembering that elementary kids are elementary kids, I actually thought our kids did a fantastic job, it was usually our same kiddos that were losing them. We just learned with our secretaries who are were amazing with this, they are just flexible and all of that stuff and. With a lot of our new systems, they can print off those ID cards really fast.
I think kids are gonna love doing that because I think they're, oh, we're so big grownups, you know, doing it.
And elementary kids really. The training that you guys did last year was fantastic to get the kids excited about it to do, and every time they came on. And if and you can tell because if the if the scanner wasn't working or if, you know, the the tablet wasn't working at that time, which there were glitches, but. The then the kids would say, it didn't beat. And then they'd wait for the driver to say, oh yeah, it's not working, or the driver would just have to, otherwise every kid was, you know, all the elementary kids were stopping saying. It's not working, it's not working, so it, I mean, the at the elementary level, they did, they did a great job, those those kids were excited.
Jen, a question.
Sure.
Oh, the solid town route, but on the rural routes, any, how were things there lined up? Any changes that are already pretty much status quo?
I don't really have a ton of changes with the rural routes, um, they're pretty basic, pretty standard, obviously, one of our longtime drivers left, so. We made some adjustments on Roxanne's route, split it into two, just because it was a really large route.
Yeah.
So we split hers into two, um.
I know there was a, I was thinking a solid route that was kind of pushing the time on, time on the bus.
Still, still is. Beginning of the year won't be a problem, they're gonna be um here in town, but towards the end of the year, it's gonna be. And, I mean, yeah, that's that's always gonna be, you know, concern, Bernie's route is. You know, it it didn't, it didn't change, so it'll still be.
Some of them will help because they're not making the in-town stops before they go out of town, so.
Yes.
A couple of the routes will probably be.
He just goes a long way, I mean, he travels a lot of miles.
Goes a lot of mile. He's he's the one that drives the most miles in a bus in a year, so when I was looking at mileage, he's. He's putting, I think, eighteen or nineteen thousand miles on a year on this bus, he drives a lot, he would, he drives a lot of weight. So.
But you really can't change unless you put one kid on the, you know, it's like a small number of kids on one bus, which then.
Yeah.
That's not. He's fully good.
It's it's a, it's a far drop, so.
So we got at this point, so we're we'll just answering questions and if things come up that, uh, you know, we need to. Make adjustments for, cause sometimes it happens, I don't know if we've had anything yet, but um. Jen gives me, I mean, we're in communication and. Um, like, yeah, every year is a little bit of seeing what the first day brings, this year will be different because of the changes, there's no question about it, but. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, transportation facility. Facility plan.
Well, Eric's, well, he's setting up, um, we're gonna, we'll talk a little bit about just facility plan overall, but just. I think the first thing is, um, after our last board meeting on that, the change orders, uh, my Paul Eric and uh. Told him about um some of the questions and concerns that were raised about those uh change orders, so. Um, he's gonna talk to us about that and give us an opportunity to talk to him about that as well, so. Then we'll talk a little about uh Sylvie Clan.
So, sorry, um.
Give me to uh change it to some.
Uh, thanks for having me tonight, um, so, uh, just two small agenda items here uh for you. Uh, just give you a little project update, I don't know, you know, probably driven by if you haven't been inside or, you know, or see what's going on. Um, so give you a little bit of update on that, and then just talk a little bit about budget and and how how things are kind of going there, so. Um, so I always like to start, cause sometimes we forget what things look like, even though it's still right there, um. This is, this is where you're still still operating, you guys will roll your eyes. But uh, aim aim to improve that, so. Um, so I'll just start with uh some schedule uh stuff, this is the most recent schedule uh that uh that Merritt uh has provided. But um, it's about two weeks old, um, so. What you see here is kind of the overall uh timeline of all the activities on the on the left-hand side. Um, and then they what they have is just kind of a a giant chart, um, schedule, it shows the months of the top, and then when uh when their activities are. Um, the red bars and the blue bars are just kind of curricular pathing, so curricular path means. Uh, you can't do B until you finish A, you know, but you can also do some other things simultaneously. So you can see here, I just highlighted the the current week where we are. Um, uh, and then uh what's about to happen, so there's a big chunk of things that are gonna get um get going here. Um, in the next week, um, mostly interior stuff, uh, like steel sub-framing in the office area. Um, uh, some of the interiors, uh, not in those during walls, like you start to see things. Uh, older framing and windows, piping, all that stuff's gonna really start happening on the on the interior, so. Just a little bit closer, I know it's harder, harder. But um, that's what they're gonna go through right now, um, I think, uh, that they'll be able to to slide some of these things back, they're making some ground up on some areas. Uh, but, you know, that's that's for Merritt to kind of, you know, talk about and and go through. Um, we've all seen it, we're all experiencing it. And that's part of the reason why some of the, you know, some of the, I don't know, maybe the way out there in speeding this, but. The average for Carol, the average uh for June is point five two, and we basically hit that tonight, so we're right on target. Uh, for for June, um, July. Boy, we we knocked that out of the. So, um, the reason I say that is today they were out there pouring uh the east driveway kind of area and kind of the the control point, so. Um, some of that stuff probably could have gotten done sooner, but you gotta wait for the soil to turn out. I'll put it on on that, uh, Minnesota, so. Um, some of the upcoming things that we have, uh, we we just had a a furniture meeting here, oh, probably two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, and we just sent over some um, some concept stuff to to Jen and Casey, so that's the next piece that we're just kind of getting those things uh put together. Um, and that'll be something that comes to the board for uh for final approval here, um, in the very near future, so, um, we we hold some of those dollars in the budget. Uh, to get, you know, desks and tables and chairs and stuff in there, so you're not moving in with uh with uh with existing stuff. So here's a um, current view of the of the exterior, um, this is from the west side, so. That first garage or bay, um, is the uh is the wash bay, the next two are the maintenance entry to the maintenance bay. Um, and then the the large opening there on the on kind of towards the rear, uh, that's the reception main entry to the facility. Um, and then as you go around, so on the. So you can see just the sliver of the building on the left there, on the right-hand picture, they just placed all of that concrete today and they're. Doing soft hits this evening, so that I'll continue to cure, um, and then uh they'll be able to, you know, that and use that. Um, this is a view looking uh to the west of the wash bay, um, so uh kind of trained in the center. Um, the interior, there's an interior wall, you can see where those pipes are kind of sticking up just to the left of that uh, uh, of that lift. Um, that area will, there will be where all the wash bay equipment, the tanks and things like that will be, um, housed. And so that'll be behind a another wall, um, so you'll just have to pay for the, for the buses to drive through. And then this is looking in the maintenance bay, uh, where, so I'm looking to the east. Um, right there, you have the mezzanine, so it'll be kind of a storage area for extra parts and uh things of that nature that uh that aren't used on a daily, regular basis. And then below that is the shop area, so, um, you know, tools, air compressors, all the kind of things that they need to um to make. Um, engines work and from and repairs as needed in the shop, larger things obviously go out to, you know. Um, auto automotive shops and things like that, but they'll have a, um, if you remember. Previous, maybe we can see this in one of the photos. Yeah, currently, the shop is like on the edge, there's around the, you know, around the buses and stuff, so. Um, so we'll have a nice area to work with and not have to worry about, um. Uh, you know, making combinations with with the buses as it happens, so a bigger view of the of the uh maintenance bay on the left-hand side. Um, you got this, some things that'll come in there later, uh, you got, you know, obviously piping, electrical and and uh HVAC stuff to run. Those are the things that in that next block, that next scheduled chunk that that I was showing you. And then this is a view out to the north, um, so, um, just a recent commodification was, um. Uh, you'd ask for some additional concrete, kind of a walkway, uh, and kind of a drive-up so that uh they could get off the bus onto a a. Hard surface area, so they have that framed up there, um, that is almost a hundred fifty foot long of of uh. Framed, and I think it's fifteen feet, ten or fifteen feet wide, um. And uh, so that'll all be paved concrete, and then you can see uh where the ballards are, uh, there'll be some light poles there. And uh so that'll all be paved concrete, and then you can see uh where the ballards are, uh, there'll be some light poles there. And then those will be the locations for um uh plug in the diesel uh to keep the engines uh, you know, warm during that during the inclement weather, so. So things are really coming along, and again, this is one of those things where um, you know, you can see it's dry today. Doesn't look like it raining for the next couple days, so let's let's beat that, uh, let's hope that it completely. Um, there's just rounding out some photos here, uh, so this is now on the east side, so uh the maintenance bay, if you would, you know, drive through. Um, and then, um, oh, I apologize, this is on the west side, riding in and then the the wash bay um in. And then you can see the stew just formed for the uh for the uh farm entry there, for the main entry as you come along. And then this is just looking out through, um, basically from the reception area, this is a view that the um that the uh. Reception uh person would have, um, all, there would be glass there on the right-hand side. Um, and then right about that uh second doorway, that'll be um kind of the kitchen crew uh crew area, so. There's a whole bunch of framing and stuff that'll be going in there in the next uh couple of weeks, so, okay. Let me get a chance, drive by, stop by, wear a hard hat. So I know this is a little bit hard to read here, but um I'll there'll be a couple of things that I blow up, but next section here just talked about budget. Um, and I know you guys had some questions about some things, and so um I'll just share some overall comprehensive information and then. Definitely open up for for uh for conversation. So this is what we shared with you um at the at the bidding phase, um, so um. Basically during design, we show you uh column A and B, um, and then once we get to bidding and construction, we show you uh C through. Uh, through the per mager, and that just tracks the history of um of the of the costs of the total project uh cost. And you can see there at the bottom, it gives you totals and where we stand, so some of the things that um, let's see here. We'll get uh. We'll get a little bit further into that, so one of the things, column B um is is contract changes, so on any project that you're you're typically gonna have. Or a large project, typically you're gonna have some kind of change on project, right, and it changes, you know, they always uh. It has a bad connotation, the word change order, right, but what if a change order was negative, right, and and sometimes those do happen. Um, but you can see there in that ninety-six, three thirty-two, um, that's the column that we we modify, we uh. We hold uh those changes uh in there, and at the bottom under budget contingencies, um, we we hold line ends for those. And then I'm just showing you where and where you stand within the overall budget, and. So there's four really four types of change orders, um, one is added scope. Uh, two would be unforeseen conditions, three may be regularly required requirements from like the uh. Authority's jurisdiction, the fire marshal or um, you know, co- other code settled requirements, things like that. And then number four would be Arizona missions, um, and like I said, change orders can be either cost to increase or cost decrease. Um, most people think of them as cost increased, right, you've seen the the meme where there's a a boat and then there's a dinghy behind him. Says change order on it, so, um, so we always kind of, again, connotation is talked about in a cost increase um fashion. We didn't talk about this at the beginning of the project, uh. Always comes up at some point in time, but obviously we strive for accuracy, you know, we spend a lot of time telling you how good we are, right, and. We're the best that's out there, and and we do, we believe that, um, and and hopefully we can prove that to you. Um, however, um, we're not perfect, none of us in the room are perfect, the industry isn't perfect. Um, and so what the the contract um allows for or actually mandates is that we hold a construction contingency. You can see that in the middle there, um, it actually requires a five percent contingency that we hold, and um, and that's for. Any of those things that I listed on the slide, one, one through four. Um, and it has to be budgeted for all projects and every project, um, that's just a line item on the on the on the budget. Um, one of the things that we talk about within that order agreement is um is, you know, when you, when you pay for things, right, and so uh. One of the things that we have here is um this, the the item that I think you have in question, the the cash base and for the the wash bay. Um, isn't is an added item, it's an added scope item, right, um, should have been there at the beginning. I apologize, we're we're human, our engineers didn't didn't put that in, um, but. It is value added to the district, it's value added to the building, um, you know, our group isn't isn't seeking value for that, um, and so. That that's one of the things that that we go through in a in a contractual obligation. So now the question, well, when does, when does the architect pay for something, right, when when you pay for that error or that that mistake? So if a if a component of a project is improperly installed, okay, so I can just give you a simple example here. Let's say we designed a foundation and we tell you to put it in at, you know, at at a certain elevation, um, and they do that. You have the concrete truck out there that, or they they get, they do all that stuff, and then at some point after that, we figure out contractor of us. Oh, that's not at the right height, right, we poured it too high or poured it too low, either way. Uh, that has to come out and we have to make a change, we have to get it right, so that all the other paid parts and pieces go back together. We don't expect you to pay for something, please, so that's when you and our group would step up. And we would pay for that, that cost, the remedial cost to that, and so in that case, um, let's say in this example here. We would be at a cost, we would replace that foundation, cause you've already paid for it once, okay? Um, and put it in this proper location. So going back to the to the budget contingents or the budget uh form, um, one again showing you there is, those are the changes that we're recording to date. Um, roughly ninety-six thousand dollars and change, um, that follows through on for our budget contingency, uh. Line item there, we're holding about two hundred seventy-two thousand um dollars in contingency, that's part of the budget, that's your dollars, we haven't spent all those. Um, you can see there that we have, after the ninety-six, we had one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars removed. I talked to you a little bit before, we're going through furniture design right now, we hold a line and when their budget for that, so those will be some things that we'll look and again share in the. The next few weeks, okay? Also, again, just a little bit larger so that you can see it, um, how those flow through, um, the construction phase, we usually hold a design phase one. Um, that drops off as we get into the um into more detailed drawings and then obviously uh the construction based component, so that's five percent. Of the um, of the total value there, and then just to show you again where um where things sit. And then what that does feed through to on the bottom there is where your where your total, but it's the total expenditures, that you're spending. Expensing on the um on the, on the project, so currently you're about seven hundred ninety thousand dollars under budget, which is good. Um, again, let's just make an assumption here, just for a moment, uh, for the purpose of this diagram, that hundred and seventy-five, that's for me. Again, that has not been spent, that's still in your in your bank account, um. If we were to have no more change orders on the entire job, or you get to the end, that number would zero out and fall to the to the bottom here, so. Seven ninety plus one seventy-five, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars under budget, okay? So I know sometimes it's a little bit difficult for people how we how we track that, but um again, it's just from a budgeting standpoint to help. To help you see and and understand in the budgetary uh uh lineup. So then again, metrics, right, everything that we do is about metrics, progress, um, numbers, percentages and things. So I told you that the industry standard is five percent, it's a contractual landing, at five percent. Um, so to date on this project, we've made it out of the ground, we have a vertical building, that's fantastic, the hardest thing behind any project is getting out of the ground. Um, without any added scope, we're at twenty-five, five percent. That's really good, okay, so about twenty-seven thousand dollars. With added scope, you know, wondering what that is, that's the actual concrete that we just that we just put in there, right, um, we're at one point nine two. But the stage of construction that we're at, with eighty-four months left of construction, though, that's really good, okay? Um, and so again, the construction contingency remaining is one uh one seventy-five. Is never our goal, it's not our goal to spend that, um, to use that, but it's there, but sometimes there's, there's a need, right? So we've been partners in this for for a little while, um, I went back with some bidding, some history, um, yeah, hired in twenty twenty-one. We appreciate that, that's that's fantastic, um. So we don't always toot our horn, right, or Midwest Humble, or um, we we uh, sometimes we just do things. AC calls, you guys call, or we just, we just do things, and we don't ever uh kind of come back and share with the board the things that we do. Uh, as a firm or your district or invest in your district, so. Um, so we we part of this in twenty twenty-one, so facilities that's moved and semester planning, um, with that understanding that that would eventually. Lead to projects, lead to loan reference, all kinds of things, um, and so since twenty uh it's twenty twenty-five. We haven't asked you for any more fee, we haven't, we haven't done, uh, or we haven't, you know, asked for or anything additional, um, we're we're helping you with the next round. You know, uh, high school, middle school, master planning, things of that nature. Um, so over the last four years, um, you know, our groups made an investment of almost fifty-six thousand dollars to the district. I just been laboring our time to assist you with that, and we're proud of that, I hope you're proud of that, and. During contract negotiation, um, I believe the the district did ask for a reduction in our fee percentage, or um, I believe watched. Right, we said, sure, we'll do that, we wanna work with you, um, we'll we'll make that investment in the district. Um, Fairview Elementary Playground, uh, Casey calls, say, hey, we're gonna do, we're gonna do some surfacing over at Fairview. Um, can you help us out? Sure, no problem. So we designed a two hundred thirteen thousand dollar project, was zero change orders, and I didn't charge you a dime. We we just did that for you, and um, the value of that would have been about fourteen thousand dollars. Then when we got to uh the end of the bidding stage for this project, ran into some challenges and some interesting. Uh, legal things, um, and so during that, we extended the, what I'll call a bidding period time. Invested an additional six weeks of time to help you through that, um, that period, and hopefully get you. Um, a project that you deserve and that you want and that you need. And then finally here, the district added some scope here recently, um, additional walkways, so. A change order now about sixty-eight thousand dollars, um. We've made an investment, we're not charging you for that, and. So over the last four years, we've invested almost ninety-four thousand dollars in in the district. I haven't asked for a dime. I love coming here, I love talking to people, it's great, um, and so the discussion that I wanted to have with you is. Again, not to not to toot our horn, um, but to show you the value that we offer to the district, um, and hopefully that's. That's the notice you have seen, um, because I understand that there's a question how in relation to missing a a catch basin. About thirty-six hundred dollars, and who's gonna pay for that, so. I like to open up our conversation and discussion.
Eric, real quick, you're certain, um, DLR, we had you helping us, Henry helping us, some people from DLR helping us. All of our partners, you give me roughly number of people.
Over the course of all of the things that we do last couple of years. Probably twenty or twenty-five people.
Twenty, twenty-five people, okay, now, one one of the things, you know, that comes up is over the last two years, we we paid. Uh, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to DLR. Okay, so when we look at that, I mean, that's taking every administrator in here, plus four they're missing, that's six months of all their pay. So that that's why I'm kind of asking that, and then I was also told by Nicole at times that are we paying? For your travel time or your travel transportation here too for meetings?
Just the reimbursable time, but my time is not not billed to you.
So like rental car.
Okay, now further, so the seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, if you can help me over the last two years, what did that seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand? What what did that, what did we pay out of that roughly, if you can give me a breakdown, what did that go to?
Or. Of the of the fee amount there?
Yes, that.
Yeah, the the labor time for professional services.
So seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, basically we're about twenty or twenty-five individuals.
That's a round number, right?
Or sometimes less, yes, okay, yeah. Now, did we pay ahead or was that already, that was filled hours, so we didn't, we didn't give anything in advance?
No, okay, you pay, most, usually you're paying a full, all of interviewers, so we provide the service and when we send it, invoice the problem. Um, four things, uh, now, like I said, for the um for the master planning. You'd have to check, I didn't check the invoices before I left, but I think we we filled through all that, um, and so when I come out. There's no, there's no charge.
I appreciate seeing your breakout on that. I guess. Lack of some sort of charge that they didn't. I mean, cause we just don't know.
You're you're right, and and that's that's on me just as much as anybody, right, um, and again. There's things that we just do for our clients, and I would do for as a partnership, we're in this together, right, some it's a marriage. There's highs, there's lows, I get it, right, and it's about communication and working towards that, and we don't, we don't always often communicate. Uh, the things that we do for for you, um, without without ever asking for. Recognition, compensation, you name it, whatever it is, so. Um, in relation to the change order, you know, the the cash basin, I'm here in full, like. We we messed up, we didn't put that in the drawings, right, that's, I mean, that's that's a fact, um, and uh. You know, we we take steps and we pride ourselves in going back to try to figure out how to correct that for next time, what do we do? Um, you know, we talk to our staff and that's something that that just happens on a daily continual basis, um. But again, we're, things are gonna have, things are gonna uh uh do, that that foundation issue, that's a real life issue, yeah, we had that happen. Um, but we own up to it and and we'll, you know, we'll 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 take, take our lumps and and move on, um, so. I guess I'm I'm asking what the what the board is asking the DLR group, and then we can, we can have, we can have a discussion. Um, about where where we should go and how should how should address that.
Erica, I think you've always done a fabulous job, breaking it down, and you've always been here for us, I mean, I know there's been times of. In the past, we had situations and you had dropped to be here, I mean, so one of the things, I I guess what I'm saying is I value the service. You know, that you personally have given our district and and us to be here, and I I value you willing to own and take accountability. On that as well there too, so thank you for that as well.
What was the cost of that catch basin?
Uh, thirty-six dollars and change.
Thirty-three hundred bucks, and those were not works, so seven hundred thousand. I could change in the spoken project, yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, there's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be things, um. Where Jason and I were talking today, there may, there may be, I don't know, but we kind of anticipate, there may be some things kind of related to some flashings and how they, you know. Um, how we work some things out based on the drawings and actual conditions in the field, every building's a prototype, it's not a. Not a Ford Chevy or whatever you drive, right, if they haven't produced a thousand of these or millions of these. Um, so every building is unique, every condition is unique, um, and so we're going to run into the the in different scenarios. Uh, whether it be, um, a lot of what what I said, hardest hardest part of coming out of the ground is sometimes the soil just is not good, right, you have to. We have to make some changes there, and that's, that's always a hell of a way to start the job. Cause they're for, you know, as expensive and and things.
Yeah, the question I've got is that the under budget, seven hundred and ninety thousand, what's the main driver in that, that's, I mean, I know there's like multiple things, but. What's the main thing that's causing this project to come in that much under budget, sure, very happy with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, um, so one of the things that that we were um tracking was um right at the at the time of bidding. Yeah, um, and this this went to the the um explanation of the addition uh on the back, this the cold storage area, um. Steel pricing was a lot higher during the during. Steel pricing was a lot higher during the, during the, uh, the estimating period, the design and estimating period. Um, and the actual numbers that we were getting from steel and stuff led to those estimates. And so, uh, part of a lot of that was, um, the market. I think it's just being more competitive at that time and, and steel numbers coming down right towards the end of COVID there. Um, and so there's a lot of that. Well, the other one is, is good competition. Um, we had, we had a number of bidders, um, I think seven on, on the, on the project. Um, and if you, I think I did an analysis for, for you on, on how those numbers played out. A high to low, and they were very competitive within, within themselves. And so again, we don't tutor a horn a lot, but what that tells us, um, is that the drawings were. Um, were, everybody saw them equally, right? When I wrote a note, everybody understood what that meant. Um, there are some times where you may have, um, ambiguities in the drawings. Um, and one bidder says, well, I think it's this way. And the other guy says this way, and you have a twenty percent fluctuation, like quote, right? Um, so, uh, the quality of the documents, um, went together, um, I, I think is, uh, is part of that. And, and the metric that we use, uh, both internally and as an industry to measure that is in the change order percentage. Um, I don't know, how many RPs and things that we, we respond to or owners ask, like, okay, what's the percent of change orders that you have on a project? And it's always a little bit of catch twenty two, right? Because. If I just show what the actual change orders are for, for the project itself, again, without owner added scope. Point half a percent out of a five percent contingency that we're, that we're, uh, asked to hold. Because that's what the average is. That's an average. Sometimes, sometimes lower. If it's a renovation, you tend to, you tend to be a little bit higher, so. Um, so at this, at this point, at this juncture in the project, um. Out of the ground, vertical, a lot of the systems are in place, um, at half a percent. That metric for us tells us that. Things are going really well. And I better find some wood because, you know, I just jinxed myself, right? Um, so things are going really well and I anticipate them to continue to go with all. Again, will there be some upcoming changes? I, I anticipate that. That's again, part of the, part of the process. Um, you have outside entities that have looked at your drawings for four weeks. They look at them for six months or, you know, vice versa, so.
Well, part of that reason I asked that is just looking at the total budget on it. If we're through the bigger, major expenses. Yes, I'm asking, are we forecasting? We're probably going to come in under budget for the whole project.
Yeah.
So, which is really good.
And that's where my trend line would, would, that was right in show. Um, again, some of the other trades coming on now, you know, with piping and ductwork and things, um. Lines cross or whatever that, that may be, um, there may be some stuff, uh, that, little, little things that come up, but. Again, not on wood. I, I would not anticipate anything large at this point. And part of the, part of the review process, um, too, is again, not to shift the burden or shift the, um. The responsibility, but. You know, we do the drawings of contractors, look at them, they bid them, they ask questions. Um, we go through shop drawings, shop drawings are. The, the final verification of what our drawings are to how it is actually built, right? So a lot of things are flushed out in that period. And then the final stage is in construction. So they're taking their drawings and we're putting a pipe or the duct hole through there. Um, and that's for the final stage of, I mean, that didn't quite work out how we anticipated or, or, you know, whatever it may be. And so again, there's always, there's always things that, that will crop up and come up. Now, the playground. Right? Zero change orders, a small project like that, I, I mean, I would, again, we hold five percent, but I would, I would kind of anticipate that. Here we're talking about a full, full on building. Um, and, um, and there's just going to be things that happen, so.
Yeah, we, uh, it's not on here, but if we vote on those two bills, we'd wait till the next meeting. Wait till next.
What did we? Say we, well, we approved the change orders, but we didn't at last meeting, but we were just trying. We approved the work to proceed. Yeah, I think so. And it was just a matter of who was going to be paying for it. So I would say if we have to approve it separately, it would just be at a different meeting. Was it specifically on here? But I don't know that we would necessarily need to because they're under.
We'll check and look. We need to put it and make sure it's on the, for August, uh.
Cause they're each under five, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Where are we at on the next phase?
Yeah, of our facility plan or the.
Facility.
Facility, yeah. So that's kind of where, if you're okay, we can kind of transition into that, uh. So Eric was here, I don't know, that was several months ago now, uh, a couple of months ago anyway. Um, and we spent a work session on talking about, um. This building and we were, if you recall, spent a lot of time on grade configuration and kind of landing on a couple of different scenarios. Um, and when Eric and I were talking about that. He's, you know, his takeaway from that evening was that he felt like we still. Need, had work to do to figure out, you know, how committed we were to those scenarios and some of that. Some of those things. So if you think about, if we were going to have the middle's, current middle school be an intermediate school. But seventh and eighth grade where the, uh, add on to the high school and so seventh and eighth grade would be there in some capacity, if you recall. Um, that, you know, that was just the people in the room talking. Um, and so like how much, you know, if, if, are we, are we committed to something like that? And if so, then. What's the next step in terms of communicating that, getting feedback? Um, in, in terms of from the community. I mean, I think those are some things that we would need to talk about. I, as far as, have you done any work on any of those scenarios yet?
No, but we had kind of narrowed it down to, I think, to, or it was an addition at either of the buildings. Um, but the main component of each of those was, again, the grade configuration, which you're going to wind up with. Um, and so. We didn't want to go too far ahead, but the price goes out, knowing that. Administratively, if we changed one of the models for how your grade configuration was going to happen. Um, what other impacts that might have to, what I'll call special programming. The easy part is kind of core, you know, math, social studies, English, things like that. But how that affects your special programming is really the next. The, the, the wild card stage in that. So what I would recommend is, um, we can either, you know, help come facilitate with some. Um, to kind of an administrator's session of what that means, um, or. You know, do you guys do some homework, talk amongst yourselves about how that really plays out with your curriculum? Of all the three hundred thirty some school districts in Iowa, there are, there are differences between each of them. Um, and so again, how it affects your programming and how your rate. Station out, um, internally and then brought to this table because again, as Casey mentioned. Um, whatever you decide ultimately has to be, um. Presented, discussed, surveyed with, um, your, with your constituents, your community. Um, and that, just like, just like busting. Somebody's phone is going to ring off the hook, right? Um, with, well, why are we doing this and how does this affect my child and? Um, and how does it affect busting and how does it affect some of the logistics and things? So, so that's where I think we're at, um. We can, we can certainly, um, and we have programs for both of those, uh, both those buildings, when I say program, like space, uh, allocations. But those are again, just from what we know of your district today. And there may be more idiosyncrasies that we need to kind of dive into and say, is this really what you need or is this, or is it something different? So.
You, you have those two buildings, uh, two ideas that we got that last time. And I know we narrowed it down there too.
Yeah.
And you have those copies of the renditions? When did you guys bring it and present them?
No, they, they have them. Anything you present to you.
Well, no, because we have new eyes.
That's what I, that's what I was just going to say. I think that it'd be very important for those two that we narrowed it down to, to go into an administrator meeting. Our administrative meeting so that you guys can.
Especially being the middle school and high school, because we talked about moving the seventh grade, the seventh and eighth grade. To the high school.
And moving.
And then building an extension to high school would probably be the newer part and the middle school would be the older part.
So the only thing we really committed at that meeting was assuming this building gets retired.
Yeah, yeah.
That, so that, that was the one thing that we, it sounded like we agreed on that night.
Or moving younger ones or to Fairview. So expanding Fairview or expanding the high school were the two. Choices we were kind of looking at.
Yeah, and that, well, and then longer term, um, you know. How that sequence plays out because obviously if you're going to move from here, we have to have a place for me to go. And then what's, what is the domino effect of what, what comes first, uh, school, high school? Obviously there will be, it is on there. And then, um, and then what's your long-term district? I think it seems structured will look like.
And like gyms and.
We're going to have to do something with the pots or in front of it, no matter what.
Yeah, that was part of it.
And looking at making sure that we have gym space and lunchroom space. Yeah, so I think that's going to go back. It needs to go back down to the administrators. Take a look, see and see what's best or what you think is best.
And I think too, probably in that process, I think we need to update. Uh, like enrollment and number of classrooms and stuff like that through that process. See where we're at.
I feel like that's our first step is. Well, we're going to be at three years on, where we're going to be at five years on enrollment. It does that plays into. You know, what do we design that fits that? And with our current, or the trend is in here. I even just providing flexibility with the plan. So if we know we're enrollment for the next five years or estimated. If things were to change, how can we adjust that plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, on fly. So right now we've got bigger classes graduating, you know, we have kindergartens coming in and at some point that's going to, that's going to plateau.
Right.
And then you have the.
Sounds like next steps.
Then you have finance, like just funding and changes in property tax.
Yeah, yeah, that's another big.
All that that can play into.
So if there possibly could be multiple bonds that we'd add, does it do one building first? Then look at another one probably a year or so later.
Well, I mean, I think you could, that or sometimes schools will lump everything in and they, it's a phase.
Yeah.
It approves of, if it passes, it's a phase.
Yeah, I think we'll struggle with one beautiful, one big beautiful.
So can, can, can you stretch it? You're still be.
I mean, that's a good one.
No, I, I, uh, for me, I just got to read. And I've talked a little bit with Casey about just the, the hurl and roll my thing. I just feel like. We're kind of going forward thinking it is what it is today and it doesn't, I mean, it looks like our trend is changing, unfortunately. We got to just factor that in. It may not change the scope of what we're doing. Well, maybe there's two or three less classrooms at seven.
Right.
I think we need to just get that. Dynamic figured into that because I don't, we hadn't really done that.
No, so we're happy to come and, and kind of if you want to meet up in the administrator group together, um, and we can just kind of flush through what. What we understand the programs of there today.
Yeah.
And then collectively, we can look at a projection and say, here's where you think enrollment may be. Um, and how that would affect the structure of, of classroom usage, of building usage, um. So that you can make an informed decision then of which way to, which way to go. And then once we have that, we can. We can tidy up the numbers. I mean, I know we provided some, you know, kind of high in the sky numbers. Uh, but then we can provide that to your financial consultants and then. They're really good. And I give you no scenario. It was like, you know, is it one big bond, but you're taking your. You have authorization for that, but you don't pick all the money out of a main one. It's, you know, it's phase, um, or. Is it, you know, like another district or with right now, they know. Roughly every five, eight years, they're going to have to have, do a, a bond in order to, um, to get to the, the final result. And that was communicated to the community upfront and people, you know, now times change, things have all grown. Um, but that was what was bought into on, on day one. So.
And I could.
There could be some, you know, because the transportation facility, we didn't borrow any money, it was paid for, we still have. That funding stream too, as well as far as our saving, pepper mowing against that. We'll have some things that will be. Getting paid off that we use, uh, those funds for in the past, so. It could be a stage process, um. That leads finishes with a bond issue or somewhere and there's a bond issue, we'll see. So next step, so, yeah, we'll work with Eric to get a, um. Meeting with kind of administrators, revisit the, the things we just talked about and.
And come back. One thing in the timeline, you know, to just to keep in the back. Number one, I always say, don't rush it, right?
Yeah.
That always comes. You'll see that, um, but, uh, clearly, you know, for. Uh, now that the legislation have changed, you only have once a year opportunity, um, so. Now this November is your first opportunity. You're not ready. I'm now professionally, I'm telling you. Um, your next, your next window would be, you know, next November, but it's not up till November. You really have to have that plan in place and communicated by. May or June, right? Because, uh, you need to get, get to a petition period and all that kind of stuff. And you want to have all those questions and things flushed out, um. Way, way before that. So, um, so that just keeps you in the back of your mind is like, okay, what's the process and what's this?
And that's the same year that our pebble, voted pebble expires. So. Just thinking kind of along those lines to the sixty seven cents.
Fires in twenty.
Twenty seven. So the end of twenty sevens, when it's done, unless we renew it, which.
That's the sixty seven cent one, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we'll work, we'll get to get that scheduled there and keep the ball moving.
Not have even seen all that beginning stuff that we, they started. Of why we started with the bus barn and all the things about this lovely building.
And I think that, I know like Jeff and I talked about something with this building, uh, that's, that we may be dealing with in terms of HVAC. So coming forward. So there's going to be things like that to come up. So, and I know you guys are, the board's wanting to. Not, then you want to keep this moving. I, I know. So we don't want to hurry, but we don't want to stall out either. I guess it's right there.
Yeah, and, and, and then also for, um, the things that Piper Sandler will do for you is. I mean, you, you have current needs, right? You have current stuff that just, things just happen. Um, and so they'll help align a budget for you to maintain those, those things that.
Yeah, what are their ongoing expenses? What, what's our capacity for new financing? All of that shit.
Anything else from anybody?
Won't show you the dirt.
Thanks, everybody.
Well, somebody sent it. Sorry, I missed it. I think I've been a second. All in favor of it.
Hey, Mr. Simley. I have some unsolicited advice for you. Say if anybody wants a sweet.
Oh, yes. Yes.